We've met several times. This is my neighbor Kathy.
Okay.
What is happening here? When we had our neighborhood meeting, I don't recall a building height request. Is there a specific capacity?
Yeah, I thought that's exactly what we talked about with the renderings.
I didn't see the.
We showed the three-story renderings and talked about the height going up to accommodate that.
Wouldn't we do this?
When we met in the.
That was, yeah, that was a couple of weeks ago, about three weeks ago or so.
Maybe four, five weeks ago.
Yeah, I had another two to that event. You might have missed it.
Yeah, we sent out a couple of notes. Well, we didn't, the neighborhood chairs did for River Bottoms. I think we have three separate neighborhoods there.
Yeah, we have the River Bottoms neighborhood and our group up at the top.
We are concerned.
Yeah, so this is no concerns. That's not true.
No concerns, what are you referencing?
Neighborhood issues. No concerns on building, not on street.
That was probably not that meeting, by the way, I suspect.
Well, yeah, when we were there, there was vote taken just out of, you know, who's in favor or able to.
Stephen would know me.
Promote project as it was. It shows three stories and it sounds like a review and not.
No dissenting, and I voted in favor, but I didn't realize what we're talking about, the height increase. I've been pretty supportive, but you've done a nice project there, so we would like to continue to be supportive. But we really are concerned, what, you know, the existing structure has, what the total height is. And then the schools, all the schools. Then maybe you can help us understand a little bit. This is the old drawing.
I know, I've been involved.
About thirty-eight iterations ago.
Yeah, way back in the fifteenth. When one started, two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve. At any rate, what is the existing height of all this? How do you plan the, your new part right over here?
Well, no, this would be the new part here. This actually shows the entirety.
Oh, I see. Okay, this is the existing part.
Yeah, this is very old. It wasn't designed to have. So the next phase would be here. Orient the camera in some direction. So.
I was hoping they would show something.
So we oriented this way, but it'll be three stories.
That's what I figured. There could be another, you've got to go about a hundred feet to get work. That would put this section not that much higher than this section.
It would be nice.
We sit, we've sit right over here looking at a water rose.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. Isn't that rooftop? It's very high. When you say thirty feet, are you saying thirty, are you saying to the height?
Um, to the height.
That's the maximum height. Well, I don't know.
According to.
Well, I think, I think the way to go on the trajectory is it's.
Ground level up?
It's kind of a midpoint, the ground level. Other projects, and these always point in the midpoint. And then they came out to the midpoint. We're supposed to get the pitch of the rooms.
Oh, the apex.
That's the city code. So that's how they look at the high surges.
The pitch is, of course, the distance from the apex down to E. And that's a set, probably a set standard building.
Well, except for, it's two tresses. So one tress would be six, ten feet, or they don't just put one tress on top of the other. So the roof itself is probably, which is wide. Ten to twenty-four, so it's a perfect, six, two, twelve, and twice. It's probably twenty-four. The roof is probably about twenty-five.
I would hope so, but, I mean, the thing that needs to be discussed really is not the height of this, it's eight or nine feet from the perspective of where you are to where this is. The thing that is already there, it's just not, you are so far much higher.
We're about a hundred feet from here up. And right now, we look kind of out from the front room window. My wife says, well, we can see as well. I'd say, well, then you've done a good job there, I appreciate that. But if this goes up another ten feet, then we'll be looking into windows with more roof, and it blocks, it actually blocks our view of across University Avenue and all the homes down there, which is nice at Christmas time, they put lights and everything.
We'd like to be able to see out.
Yeah, I can't see University Avenue.
You can.
Not with the system. I'm sorry.
So we've got half a dozen people up there that are all kind of looking down, so that's where the concern lies. When I talk to them, everybody is in the same opinion. What are we going to be looking at? Can you go down any further?
We really can. You can flatten the pitch out a little bit more. Save the code and have that work properly and have a check for the weather.
Yeah, no, I mean, you've got to have, to put on stuff that has. Yeah. So what do we do when we're sitting up here looking down? We talked about doing something to improve this structure. Both people down here don't live up there. And then you talked about correcting this section so we can get this access. Why was what we learned about the same strategy? The, the, probably hasn't been still connected, is that under the period? Those of us who were here before really enjoyed the serenity of the canals. The canal is gone, the trees are gone. This is helpful, but how can we preserve our own view of what's going on down here?
You know, we've talked, say, just. I think that would, that would be helpful.
I was talking to our neighborhood chair, Bonnie Carle, about the possibility of doing the grant, getting the grant hits, and so, I mean, the help, the finding people and the folks, just so if we can combine our efforts and also volunteers to help us improve that oil brush. You have to clear that brush out pretty fast. I, I could imagine, I was watching. So we still have the problem, all of us, Kathy, right over here, and I'm right over here, and the other same problem down here. So we all have the same problems, you know, like to be able to see. I speak to these might be helpful, but that's right. There's a, let, let, it's deciduous, it's ultimately tolerant, it's barely passed, it's a much, and it tolerates, uh, traffic coming up. Those are big trees, maybe a appropriate tree, like the apple too, or something, both grew up low.
This is right side of this, right now, this is. Finish this off. It's a very nice mistake. We're interested in this.
Okay, it is five thirty-six, and I will call the planning commission hearing for April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen to order. We have two, two items on the agenda for this evening. Items that are starred are legislative and require municipal council decision, and we'll be making a recommendation for approval or not on those items. Non-start items are administrative, and the planning commission makes the decision to approve, continue, or disapprove. We'll start with a prayer and pledge this evening. The prayer will be Ms. Ellsworth, and the pledge, Mr. Howard.
Our dear, kind Father in heaven, we're very grateful for this opportunity to come together and to think about the issues that, that affect our city and our neighbors and our families. Father, we ask you that thou bless us with wisdom, with compassion, with understanding, help us to see these issues from all sides and to make the best decisions possible. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please arise and join me in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take roll call of the commissioners. Please state your name and whether you have any conflict of interest this evening.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Jamin Rowan, no conflict.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflict.
Edward Jones, no conflicts.
Thank you. Okay, our first item this evening, item one. Matt Swain requests an ordinance text amendment to section fourteen, point fourteen A, point oh seven oh, to increase the height limit for assisted living facilities in the low-density LDR zone from thirty feet to forty feet. Although this project is in the River Bottoms neighborhood, the proposed amendment has citywide implications because it could apply to future LDR zones, and Dustin Wright will present this item.
Thank you. So this item, the applicant is requesting a height limit increase that would apply for assisted living facilities that are located within the low-density residential or LDR zone. Currently, the zone, if you look at the existing ordinance on the first, on the top there, it says that there's a thirty-foot maximum building height for all structures in that zone. The request is to have a, an allowance for assisted living facilities to actually go to forty feet, as long as the assisted living facility structure is more than two hundred feet from the nearest detached single-family structure. The applicant has recently finished a phase one of assisted living facility up on forty-two-hundred North University Avenue and is looking to do phase two. As part of that, they would like this ordinance amendment to help facilitate what they're looking to do there. In the findings on this, in the staff report, it's pointed out that the adjacent, that other one-family residential zones allow for structures to go up to thirty-five feet in height, and that the LDR zone is at thirty feet. The, here's a map that shows the existing LDR zones throughout the city in green here. The one that's closest to the top of the screen is where the applicant has, is proposing to do the second phase of their assisted living facility project. The other sites throughout the city are currently either have townhomes or things constructed on them. They're, they're all relatively new, except for, I think, the one down the bottom right-hand corner is, is one that hasn't been fully developed yet. So staff finds that with the, the buffer that's in there for the two hundred feet, that that will help on the site to, and, and other sites and in, you know, future LDR zones that get established to help create a substantial buffer from detached single-family homes. And feels like this would help in that manner. If there's any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer those.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Howard?
Yes, as the proposal's written up, it looks like this is specifically applied for assisted living facilities. Is there any reason for that specificity? I mean, are there other structures that might or should be considered in, in such a proposal? Seems, it's pretty limited, as the map shows, but I'm just wondering, is that just targeted for a reason?
Yeah, that was the applicant's request, was, was to do that, so that's the, the language that they're looking to do. So assisted living facilities is one of the uses that could go in the LDR zone.
Are there other similar commercial enterprises with the same kind of setbacks that could be treated in a like manner that wouldn't?
Not in that zone. It would be attached single-family homes or, you know, like an assisted living facility are, are pretty much what we have seen in the LDR zone.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wright? If not, I'd ask the applicant to come forward. Mr. Swain?
Good evening, I'm Matt Swain, I represent the, the owner and the applicant. Want me to answer questions, or how would you like me to?
Did you have a presentation for us this evening, or?
I, I don't. I can answer some questions and kind of give you some background as to why we're, we're requesting this. I, I think the staff report did a very nice job in outlining the purpose for it. There was a question asked about why it's so targeted toward assisted living and, and really, we, we targeted it specific for this use, so there wouldn't be any other type of unforeseen ramifications throughout the city, recognizing that this is a citywide code. We really tried to limit it just to the project that we are discussing. As I research the other LDR zones, I don't believe that this amendment will have any impact on the existing LDR zones whatsoever, based upon their proximity to other single-family The buffer is very important to us. We felt like creating that would, would limit its impact on the city at large, and would allow us to, to, to move forward on, on the second phase of our project. So we are the developers and owners of, of the Legacy Village, phase one. We worked for really quite a few years with the neighbors and city officials and, and staff to design it, and we recently held a neighborhood meeting where we invited the three affected neighborhoods. The notices were sent out by their chairs, and we hosted it actually in the, in the facility in the common room there, and discussed and showed some rough elevations of what it could look like, just to give a sense of, of the sizing and massing, as it relates to the, the current project. So what we're proposing essentially that would, would be accommodated by this LDR zone modification is going to three stories as opposed to, to two, which is currently in the, the first phase. As noted, the, the single family already allows for thirty-five feet, so five feet more is, is essentially all we're requesting, so we don't feel like this is out of keeping with the University Avenue corridor. If you're to travel up and down the corridor, you'll see Jamestown, which is three stories, which is adjacent to single family up on the hill. You'll see the other office condos on the other side of the, of university, which are three-story structures as well. And, you know, some of the single-family structures themselves are quite large. I haven't gone and measured them to see how they would compare to the height limitations that we're discussing here, but it, it's not as though you're going to drive down University Avenue and, and have, you know, like the project on, in Orem, just kind of sticking out like a sore thumb. It's, it's going to fit in with, with the other massing and, and height limitations along the corridor. The, the next phase is, is really going to be an independent living phase, which was planned and designed as we built the first phase. That was the plan, to have this next phase be independent and to share some of the common amenities which are in phase one. We told the neighbors, and we're going to stick to it, you know, the proof is in the pudding. We, we said we would build a very nice, high-quality building, and I believe that the neighbors would, would agree that that's what we've done. We've, we've gone to great lengths to extend a welcoming hand out to the neighborhood, to welcome them in. We do host a, a local LDS branch within a room that we designed specific for that use within the building, and those types of uses and those types of, of outreaches will continue with, with phase two. So we're, we're really trying to be good neighbors and do our best. I, I had some discussions before the meeting started with some neighbors that live up on the ridge, and discussed some of their concerns about them looking down on the rooftops and what that might look like visually. And I, I'm willing to go on record and say, you know, we're, we're happy to give, donate some money to the city to help beautify Lover's Lane, to help create more of a buffer, even beyond, you know, the distance buffer that we're already talking about in the ridge line and, and the, the scrub oak that currently exists on the ridge, but to help hopefully soften that a little bit, and maybe beautify an amenity in the, in the city that could be well-used by the local community. We're really trying to develop a project where people can live in the communities that they love and age in place. So we developed the townhomes, we're currently under construction there. Those are really designed for fifty-five and older buyers.
It's these.
Correct.
Primarily twin homes.
That's right. The next phase that we're talking about tonight would be independent living, which would have some limited services, and then that would be attached to the existing facility that is assisted living, as well as memory care. And so this, this facility and, and housing project is really designed to allow people to age in place, get the services that, that they need, all the way through their, their progression in life. And right now, we're, we're missing that independent component, and we'd love to, to add it, and finish out the project essentially, and, and provide all those services in, in one place. As I mentioned, we, we worked really for a couple of years on the design of the site plan to, to really limit the impact on the adjoining community. So as you can see, the, the road alignment really limits the circulation to our project. There's no crossing over from the assisted living component into any of the single-family residential neighborhoods whatsoever. And we did that by design because there were some concerns that that might create some negative impacts on the community. We were also instrumental in negotiating to get the, the light there next to the charter school, which solved a very significant safety issue where families were picking up their kids lining up along University Avenue and having kids run in into the cars there. Now they're lining up along forty forty north or one hundred east, if you want to call it that. There's plenty of space there for them to, to park during those peak hours, pick up their kids safely, and then get onto University Avenue. So we, we've tried to be, and I line that all out because it's, it's historic and I think pertinent to the discussion tonight, that we're trying to be good neighbors. We've tried to solve issues, and I think we've done a, a pretty decent job at that, and we're, we're willing to continue to work with the neighborhood and, and create an asset that they can be proud of. And we actually have some residents, parents, you know, some of those that are here tonight have parents that are living in our, our housing community, and I think, for the most part, it's, it's been well-received. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Mr., Mr. Jones?
Would, just for clarification, would you point out where the, the cliff is? I'm going to call it a cliff, it's the.
Yeah, so it's just to the east of the project, above Lover's Lane?
Okay.
All that green area, there's, there's a difference of elevation of a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred feet?
So.
It's a pretty significant ridge that goes straight up from Lover's Lane to those, the single-family homes.
So the residences, residences on two hundred east are considerably higher.
Right.
In elevation than this project?
That's correct.
Okay, their lots are very deep. Their lots come all the way down, and in many cases, they come down to Lover's Lane or down to this area. So although the lots are very deep, the houses are up on the east end of that, and the houses, like they say, are, they're a hundred feet above Mr. Swain's project.
Okay, thank you.
Just incidentally also, as a result of Mr. Swain's project, it solved a neighborhood problem in that this neighborhood down here was built off one street, one access. As a result of his project, this road was able to get put in thirty-nine hundred north, which provides secondary access to these homes down here. Mr. Swain agreed to do single-family lots right along that street, so it transitions from intense use, less intense, very low intensity, single-family R-one-ten lots, that then marry right into what's across the street very well. So this was a long time in the process, probably about two years, and the ending result, I think, was something very good for the neighborhood and for the city.
Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, I'm Dave Rosen, I'm the River Bottoms neighborhood chair, and we did hold a neighborhood meeting, and we sent out invites to over four hundred and sixty individuals in our neighborhood, and tried to get the word out on this. The meeting was held on February fifteenth, and it was held in connection with an additional park use that also involved a whole northeast area. And we had about fifty people in attendance, many of them were from other neighborhoods besides the River Bottoms neighborhood. Generally speaking, we took an inquiry as to the neighborhood's concerns for this, and as Matt has explained, most of us were very aware, when the assisted living center went in, what was going to be the additional phase two, and so there was some expectation as to what was going to be there. The request for the additional height was new part of this meeting, and we expected some conflicting statements from those living up on the bluff. They had some concerns initially when it was originally put in, and the comments were, were very minor. The River Bottoms expressed their opinion, and again, most of those who were present, and, and again, there was less than ten, so we're talking less than one percent of those who live in the neighborhood, so there weren't a lot who had a, a whole lot of interest in what was going on here. Most of them knew what was eventually going to be built, and I received very few emails back. There were a couple that came back, and not a lot of negative response to this. Overall, the neighborhood has accepted this facility, it's been a high-class facility. Many of those who live in, in the River Bottoms, in the neighborhood, have their parents that are living in these facilities, they've been in and out of the facilities, they're aware of them, they know what's going on. And I think the response is based on that. And that's our comments, as, as, from, from the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Rosen. Any questions for Mr. Rosen? Thank you very much. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Please state your name for the record.
Sharon Mehmet, I'm in the Edgemont neighborhood, so just south of this. I was also in attendance at that meeting, and I think he's given a good account of what occurred there. And, and again, Legacy has been a great neighbor, I have no. again, Legacy has been a great neighbor. I have no problems with this specific project. I always have a problem with sweeping changes to the code. I appreciate that there aren't a lot of LDR zones currently in Provo, but I have heard moves to make those changes from single-family specific to LDR and MDR and HDR, more broad. So I'm concerned about making this a broad change to the code. I have no problem with making, allowing this to go forward, especially at 40 feet. I'm surprised they're not asking for more, knowing how high that bluff is right next to it. I think that was probably the gist of my comments. I can think of a couple of places where I would have a problem with this being even 200 feet to a single-family home, but that's not even close to what this is, so.
Thank you, Ms. Memmott. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item?
Good evening. My name is Gordon Robinson. I live at 4012 North 60 East. I live in the Perry Twin Homes, which are just to the northeast of the detention pond there and to the south of Legacy. I suppose you could say that guys my age are looking at Legacy as Heaven's Waiting Room. And it's a really nice facility. My only concern is that when it was approved, and I was one of those who voted to approve it on February 15, is why we need the extra height. So I think the original height was supposed to be 37 feet, and now they want 40 feet. So I guess our concern, the neighbors' concern that I've talked to, is that, you know, are they planning to go to four-story instead of three-story? And maybe the developer could answer that. He kind of answered the question over my shoulder there, but that's our only concern, is that it doesn't get too high. For the same reason that I attended the meetings last year regarding the development at 4800 North University Avenue, there was questions about the height and the density there, and that was eventually resolved with PEG development. I think it's a workable solution. So anyway, that's the concern of the neighbors that I have talked to, is that it just doesn't go too high. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Are there any other neighborhood chairs who would like to address?
Neighborhood Chair for Sunset Neighborhood. I'd have a, is it, am I allowed to ask, address staff in this, in my comments, to ask questions with regards to the
Yes.
the land use code? One of the things, 14.14, is it 14.14A subservient to 14.14, addressing staff?
14.14A is...
Subservient?
Independent.
It's independent. So the same land use codes do not apply to 14.41A or 14.14A?
This will only apply to 14...
Okay.
Is that the only...
Oh, no. Well, no, what I'm asking is because under 14.14, there is a land use code of 6500, which are professional services. Under professional services, you'll find sanctuaries and a whole list of different things, medical services, legal services, et cetera. One of the issues that I have is that there's no such thing as under any one of the land use codes of something called an assisted living center. So you're attempting to make a modification to a zoning change on a land use code of something that doesn't exist. I was just curious to know if you clarified that under 6516. Has that been clarified under 6516, that assisted living center actually is a designation under the land use code?
I don't know. I didn't bring the land use code.
Okay, so my question on that then is, because in my area, we had a quote-unquote "assisted living center" under 6516 land use code classification, it's now allowed to be a drug rehab center, right in the middle of our neighborhood. And so all I would request that the community, that this committee here tonight, if you're going to open up this ability to adjust the zone because of the 6500 or under any one of the 6500 codes or classifications, and if you have noticed that under every single one of the 14.14 designation, whether 14.14, 14.15, 14.13, they all say that they're allowed 6500, which are all professional service except 6515, which specifically states Behavior Drug and Alcohol Treatment Centers. However, because of 6516, it has a redundant statement in it that says, including full-time medical staff includes asylum, drug abuse, and substance abuse. The city has allowed a rest home or assisted living center to become a drug rehab center. We have two of them within one mile in our area. And now we're saying, okay, well, let's make it 40 feet tall. Well, you're asking for amendment for something that is already messed up. So within, well, it's only taken four years because this was granted in 1976, and the codes were adopted in 1969. So to allow this center to make any type of modification without cleaning up the code first. Oh, go ahead. Bill, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Taylor, I don't think, I think you are correct in that there are some problems with the uses you've just described.
Okay.
But I don't think those problems apply to this situation, because in 1414A, we didn't use standard land use numbers like 6350, 6500, 6900.
That's why I was wondering also if it was subservient to 14.14.
It's not.
Because you didn't go into each one of the land use codes.
It's not subservient because the 1414 is simply the very high multiple residential zone, which isn't even used anymore, the old R5 zone. 1414A is the LDR zone. They have nothing to do with each other. They're just simply different residential zones.
Okay, so then I was wondering why then 14.14A didn't go into each one of the land uses available and appropriate within that, and then you're using a language that is outside of the standardized use code?
Yeah.
Because assisted living center isn't a standardized use code.
Yeah, we intentionally didn't follow the rigid numbers, the four-digit numbers, when we wrote these zones. Because of all the problems, you've related just the tip of the iceberg as far as the problems that are associated with those four-digit numbers. So as we've tried to write new zones, as we have written new zones for the city, we've tried to get away from using those four-digit numbers and just simply call out the land use, like one-family dwelling, one-family dwelling attached, two-family dwellings, assisted living facilities. So it's very narrow to just those things.
Thank you. Is there someplace I can turn to then that would very specifically define what an assisted living center is and how that is defined? Is there an appendix to 14.14A so that the statement of assisted living center is not misconstrued, as it has been with 6516?
Yeah, there's a whole section that this refers you to, that you have to be, you have to follow 1434-470, which are the standards for an assisted living facility.
Okay. That's, those were the, I was just making sure that we, if we were actually opening this up, that we could call upon staff to fix the differences between 6516 and 6515, which is redundant coding under the classifications that have been applied to different land uses. And I just wanted to make sure that if, in fact, you are opening this up, that we have the opportunity to address that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I'm Becky Bogdan, and I'm the Lakewood Neighborhood Chair. Lakewood is really south Provo on the west side, where I live almost across the freeway from the Home Depot. The issues with my area are we are lower in elevation. That's where we have our dykes, right, to protect the homes. And so because of all those issues, we have to start at a higher elevation. And that allowable initial building elevation in my area, my area, is at least six feet above where my home sits. So when we talk about this, we're not just talking about an extra 10 feet. We're talking about an extra 20 feet, or 17 feet, or 16 feet, depending on where you are in elevation. In southwest Provo, depends on how much more fill they have to bring in to come to that initial building elevation. And so that is my one concern, is this is a citywide thing, and I appreciate what they have done there in working with their community and being great neighbors. But where this is applied citywide, this also affects me. And what Brian was talking about, those two drug and alcohol rehab centers that used to be assisted living facilities, they're in my neighborhood. I have one on each corner, diagonal from each other, two drug and alcohol rehab facilities within my neighborhood. And so that is also a concern of mine, is how high are we letting these things go? What are they going to turn into in 20, 30, 40 years? And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak? Please state your name for the record.
I don't see our neighborhood chair, Bonnie Merrill, here, so I'd like to speak a little bit in behalf of the people who live up on the hill. My name is James Meldrum. I'm a long-term, longtime resident of Provo, and I'm a lot closer to assisted living than most of the people here. So this project has been good. We've been paying attention from our vantage point up on the hill, watching things as they progress. I've known Matt Swain for some time now. We've talked quite a bit about what they can do and what we can do as neighbors. The unfortunate thing is, I had the experience in both Reno, Nevada, and New York City of looking out of a window on rooftops and things like that, and they weren't very pleasant. So those of us who live there have a really nice view of Utah Lake. We can look at the neighbors across the street. The home, the assisted living, has been a little bit of an obstruction, but it has not been terrible. They've done a good job, not only for the people who are living there, but for those of us who look down on it. However, since the meeting that I was present at, I've talked with several of the neighbors, and they are concerned about the height and what that appears to them to disrupt their personal view. Most of them have come from California or other places and enjoy living here, as I do. So we are concerned. I spoke briefly with Mr. Swain about what we can do to mitigate the larger building, the increased obstruction to the view. There probably are things that could be done, and that is with the approval of Parks and Recreation. We've talked with Ms. Merrill about a neighborhood activity where neighbors volunteer, time and effort. Perhaps Parks and Recreation can advise on the proper vegetation, nice trees, perhaps flowers along the walkway there. A lot of joggers use Lover's Lane continuously every morning. So we need to beautify and make sure that that looks nice, as well as setting a precedent for the height of buildings that Provo City will probably see as we grow. So while in favor of the building, we would like to see some real improvements for beautification for those of us who are in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meldrum. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present? If not, are there any members of the community who would like to speak to this item? And please state your name for the record.
Kathy Heckel for the record. I live on the hill where Jim mentioned. My house is the one with the white triangle. If you look on the map, it's the big, I don't know if you have a pointer. Is my house. Jim Meldrum, who just spoke, lives two doors down from me. The neighborhood that we are concerned with the height is the neighborhood that I am right here. Jim mentioned that his house is 100 feet above Lover's Lane. My house is downhill from that, and the houses progressively get lower in elevation as you go south. I'm concerned about the height of the assisted living center, obviously, because of where I live. And my map doesn't add up. If the current structure is 30 feet, and my house supposedly sits about 100 feet above, from my backyard, you should have a good, I don't know the math, 30 feet above the assisted living center. But from my front, my lawn, I look straight at the level of the tops of the roofs. So somehow, my map doesn't add up here. The structure is at the level of my backyard. I'm concerned about the height level. I don't know that it's necessary to increase the height in this neighborhood. As you can see, it's a very dense project. I appreciate the construction, and I appreciate that people in Provo who need help living can have residence in this facility. But it is very large, and it is very dense, and adding another floor to the top, in my opinion, isn't necessary. It doesn't, it's not consistent with the homes that he has built here and the structure that he has above. They're all about the same level, and adding another 10 feet to the top of the level doesn't seem consistent or artistic, in my opinion. And then I am concerned about the height. I was not present at the meeting on February 12. I had not received notification otherwise. Would have come, and I probably would have voted, well, I would have voted against the project, increasing the height. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Heckel.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the community who would like to speak to this item? If not, I would invite the applicant, Mr. Swain, if he wanted to address any of the questions or concern that were raised by neighborhood chairs or the public.
Thank you. So I think there was some confusion as to whether we're going for three stories or four stories based off of what we had shown as a very preliminary elevation of the structure. It's three stories. So it's essentially going to look very similar to Phase One, with one story more and the same pitch of the roof. So we do foresee that being slightly less than 40 feet, probably around that 37-foot height when it's all said and done. So I wanted to put that and make that clear to everybody, that we're not looking for four stories. As far as the beautification, you know, we can work with the residents to help with that, to buffer. We've done quite a bit of landscaping around the current project. We actually did clear out Lover's Lane as a part of our agreement for Phase One. We spent quite a bit of time and money taking out a lot of the undergrowth. We put down a new layer of road base there to make the trail usable and tried to beautify that and improve it, so it was very usable. And I think, as I mentioned before, we're happy to help. We've donated that part of our property to Provo City, so they now have control over it, but we're happy to help donate some funds to help beautify that, that stretch, and create a buffer between us and the adjoining neighborhood to the east of us. So I, do you have any other questions or clarifications?
Mr. Rowan?
Yes, one question that was raised is just about the rationale for the extra request. I don't know if I heard that in your original presentation of why you're asking for the extra 10.
The rationale is, you know, frankly, the density that we're allotted with two floors financially does not work. We've been open for two years now on the first phase. We built what we feel like is the nicest assisted living facility in Utah County. It is filled up quite slowly, more slowly than we had hoped. The rents are not as high as a 25-year-old project in South Jordan. For whatever reason, the rents that we're experiencing in Provo are significantly less than the rents that a much lesser-quality project is getting in the Salt Lake Valley. And so the density is necessary for us to offset the extreme overhead expenses and the costs of the project. Without the height and therefore the extra floor, it's not viable. And frankly, we wouldn't build it if it's just two floors. So that's as frank as I can be and direct. I know this isn't a negotiation or a discussion over profitability. It's a discussion of what's proper and what works in the community and what the appropriate... and what works in the community and what the appropriate land use is. We feel like the land use is appropriate. I think it's consistent with a number of other uses along University Avenue, Jamestown probably being the closest analog to compare it to, which is just, you know, half a mile to the south of us and has been there for over 20 years and is situated very similarly to the Ridgeline and single-family residential as well. But that's the necessity of it. It is not viable with only two floors.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will turn this back over to the commissioners for a discussion and/or a motion. Mr. Anderson?
I think I'm ready to make a motion, so I don't want to... Anybody want to discuss first?
I just find it consistent with the development that's happened to date, and it sounds to me like, you know, it's a project long in coming. It sounds like there's a dialogue with the neighborhood. There are a lot of things that people like and don't like about these things, but it sounds like they have a neighbor that's willing to work with them. I find that commendable, and I think on all parties, I think they've tried to reach a balance of issues here. So I think it's appropriate.
Mr. Rowan?
Can I just ask the staff a question about, as you've considered the citywide implications of this? I mean, I know you have the map in our staff report for us. But anything that you feel is worth adding about? Just the, again, those citywide implications for doing this? What have you talked about? And this is clearly the largest green section of the map. The other sections seem quite small. Most of them, all of them with the exception of one, are west, I mean, are east of I-15. There's only that one that abuts I-15. But so just, yeah, any additional info you can pass on about that conversation?
These are all either built or under construction right now, with the exception of, that one's, well, even that one is just barely starting under construction. That's a 3,700, right, Ms.? So that they're just now breaking ground on that. And all of these other projects, they have approved project plans that are built out as townhome projects. There would be no room in them for an assisted living facility, and they would either have to tear down what has just been built or come in and get a revised plan approved for what's under construction right now. So as far as existing zones go, I don't think it's very threatening. It does open the door to that additional height in any future LDR zones the city may give. Right now, there's, I don't think there's any...
But those future approvals would depend on, or would have already before them, the knowledge of the 30 feet. You know, so in other words, they would...
Yes.
They wouldn't be approved, I'm sorry, of 40 feet. They wouldn't be approved under any other pretense, right? I mean, we would know whether or not, we could make a decision at that point about whether or not we felt that was an appropriate height.
Well, the decision that would come before you in the city council in the future would be to rezone the property to LDR.
Right, that's what I'm saying. And we would have the height in the future as kind of baked into that rezone request. If we change it now.
Yes.
Yeah, for assisted living.
Yes.
Along with the 200-foot separation requirement.
Yes.
So that would be part of that discussion, I think, as well, perhaps?
So, I mean, I certainly have appreciated the thoughts and opinions that people have shared tonight. I just have a hard time feeling anything but enthusiasm for the proposal. I mean, in general, I'm in favor of building up rather than out. I understand that it's hard when you've looked out on nothing to then have house rooftops there. But 99% of the people in our city look across the street at homes. And, you know, I just have a hard time feeling a lot of angst over that for, you know, a very small number of homes. And I realize that sounds somewhat insensitive, but, you know, that doesn't feel to me like a reason to not move forward with this. So I'm in favor of this proposal.
Mr. Jones?
I'm in favor of this also. I think in the future, something like this, it would be very helpful to have either a drawing where you show the geometry of the elevation and you show the impact of, you know, 30 feet versus 40 feet at 100 feet away. It was 100 or 200, I'm sorry. I don't remember, 200. That would be helpful, just a diagram. Or if it's possible, to bring in Google Earth, not Google Maps, but Google Earth, where we could actually take a look at this, and you can turn the plane, so you're not looking down, but you're looking horizontally, and you would actually see what this, what sort of impact this would have, given the bluff being 200 feet and how much an additional 10 feet on the building would have. I think that would be helpful.
So on that issue, on that point, just last meeting or the meeting before, the city, the planning commission looked at the Transitional Development Standards for Uses Abutting Residential Zones, 1434-300. And that, in those regulations, the 40-foot building would only need a 20-foot setback. We're talking about a 200-foot setback. It seems pretty reasonable based on our existing code and buffering requirements of the existing code.
Does this go before the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. May I suggest that in that presentation, a diagram like I described be presented? I can, I personally can visualize the profile, but I think it would help allay some of the concerns and fears if you had a diagram.
Mr. Anderson?
Again, I'm ready to make a motion. I don't know if...
I just want to say... All right, Mr. Rowan. Sorry, I thought I was done speaking, but I just have, I had one thought come to me. The only thing, the thing that I'm more concerned about, I suppose, is, as I continue to think about it, is the fact that changing the zoning citywide may make it more difficult to build these facilities in certain neighborhoods. That is to say, does it limit the possibilities for where we might build these by raising the height limit? You know, might we build, in other words, might we build in more neighborhoods at 30 feet than we could at 40 feet? And, you know...
Become restrictive.
Is there a way that we kind of can mitigate that? I mean, when someone proposes a rezoning and says, "Well, we're going to build an assisted living facility here, but we promise we'll just do it at 30 feet." I mean, they can easily, obviously, go back and say, "Well, we said we'd build at 30 feet, but it allows 40 feet, so we're going to build 40 feet."
Yeah, we've learned by experience that when those commitments are made, we have a development agreement that ties them down so that they can't do something other than what they promised.
And so that's what we would just, we would just have to, in future places, if we felt like, well, we don't want this one to be 40 feet. We want it to be 30 feet, given its context. There's no big cliff behind it, 100-foot cliff behind it.
If the zone allows 40, the city couldn't mandate on the person, you can only build 30. But if the person was to proffer that in order to assuage neighborhood concerns to get his rezoning, then we would put that in a development agreement and memorialize it.
Yeah, so that's just, that's my only concern.
I just, to add to that discussion, I think the 200-foot setback from single-family residential is going to be very restrictive on most sites that would be up for rezoning to LDR, so...
And assisted living use, so... I think with those two caveats in place, assisted living plus 200-foot setback, it pretty much takes care of any, anyone trying to do something that would be unforeseeable. Those are pretty restrictive.
And are you seeing that as a good thing, citywide?
A positive, in this particular case, yes.
What about the citywide cases?
It would still apply citywide, the 200-foot setback.
Right. But would restrictive then be a problem, I guess, is my...
Well, it's only more restrictive than what we have now if somebody wants to go above 30 feet.
Right.
So in my mind, it opens up the door for something to be taller than 30, but that's when that 200-foot separation comes into play. So I don't think this does anything to take away any options that people that currently have properties owned LDR would enjoy. And I agree, I think, with the comments that have been made about the effect of this being really, really, really limited and isolated because of just properties configurations and that 200-foot rule. Again, pretty isolated.
Any further discussion from the commissioners or a motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Anderson?
I move that we recommend that the city council approve the ordinance text amendment to increase the height limit for assisted living facilities in the low-density residential zone from 30 feet to 40 feet with the provisions that are outlined in the staff report dated April 25, 2018.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Howard, second. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council for item one?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, so we will forward a positive recommendation to municipal council for item one, and that was unanimous. Okay, item two. The Provo City Community Development Department requests amendments to Section 14.34.295 Downtown Development Design Standards to clarify architectural requirements in the downtown zones. This has applicability to the Central Business District, Joaquin, Mazer, Franklin, and Timp neighborhoods. And Josh Yosch will present this item.
Thank you. I'm excited to bring this forward to you in this setting and to have a proposal for us to review. Our intention tonight is primarily to present this generally and have an opportunity to discuss it, discuss the draft, and receive your feedback and comments to work towards bringing this back to you for a recommendation to council in the near future. The effort to revise these standards has been ongoing for some time, which is evident from the file number, starting with a 16. So we started thinking about this about two years ago and have brought it to a study session a couple times and have also had discussions along this line with the Design Review Committee. The draft that you have before you now is results from a desire to, one, improve elements of ambiguity, elements that were hard to enforce clearly, like the discussion we've had recently about doors on first floors and other similar things. And also to address what we have found to be shortcomings in the code resulting, or that have been brought to us as we've had this code on the books for a number of years and the entire time of my employ in the last six years and have found instances where projects have been brought to us that we look at and say, hm, if this project gets by our current design standards, then we have some room to work on in our current design standards. And also to address concerns resulting from projects or large developments that have just been proposed, issues we see with those and that we want to address quickly or before those projects come to fruition in an official application. So the primary areas that we've really made changes are in ground floor treatment, massing, architectural detail, and site design. Then we've added a whole section on open space and pedestrian linkages and special areas. So these, this is an outline of the sections, the top-level sections in this draft that you have. In the draft, as was explained in the memo, the yellow highlighted areas constitute language that has been directly pulled from the existing standards. Any red text in those constitutes changes. Text, edits to the text of that text that has been brought over. And then the rest of it is essentially new text or new concepts to the design standards. Before I, that essentially concludes my introduction to the item. I just wanted to make you aware that David Day is here from our Public Works Department to just present a couple issues that he, representing the rest of the department, would like us to be aware of and consider as we move forward. So I would leave it to you to determine how you would like to move forward with the discussion.
Yeah, again, I'm David Day with Provo City Public Works. So, you know, we've been reading through the proposal just like possibly you have been. And we've identified three things that make us nervous, I guess, and we wanted to make you aware of those so you can consider those items as you decide what to do with this proposed ordinance. One of them, and I think it's already addressed in the proposed ordinances, in downtown areas, the doors swinging out into the sidewalk. I think Josh has addressed that in this one. But, you know, these are things in the past that we've had to deal with and that have been sticky subjects. The other one is driveways coming out of buildings, like parking structures, and having the sidewalk right against the building so that when you pull out of the parking lot, you can't see if there's a person coming down the sidewalk. So what we've had projects do is kind of pull that building back or widen the driveways, maybe put a column down with an opening to see. And those are always tough situations to work out. So we try to implement our site distance triangles in those situations, but maybe looking to you for ideas of how to make those situations safer. The last one is the overhang. The balconies can overhang the right-of-way, which comes over the sidewalk five feet. And we're just nervous about that. I guess, in my mind, if I was walking under, I'd fear somebody had dropped something on my head. But that's just a concern that's out there that you just, that we've had in the past of that. Personally, I think it adds a lot of character to a building, but the worry is if that overhangs the right-of-way, the liability that the city faces for that coming out. So that's been on our ordinance for probably 10 years, I think, allowing that. But we've, as the downtown develops with higher density, we're seeing more projects that are taking advantage of that. So just wanted to make you aware of those three things. So the doors, which I think is already taken care of, the driveways and the overhangs. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone, any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Day or comments on his discussion or staff?
Well, I just had a question with regard to the way it's proposed. Wouldn't some of those concerns be mitigated through the applicant's process? I mean, isn't that where it's looked at to address some of those issues that clearly you got something up to the curb and you need some sort of visual mirror or something? Isn't that where that happens?
Yeah, so I guess the idea is if we're trying to improve the ordinance to give us more ability to say, yes, you have to do this. Right now, we have our site distance triangles that we require. I don't know if that's the right way to go because sometimes those get too conservative, make them pull the building too far back where if they analyzed it according to like an Ash-toe, Green Book standard, it would allow the site distance triangle to be a little smaller. So just things like that.
Part of the catch in that is that if something's not defined in ordinance, when somebody makes an application, we really don't have the opportunity to require them to do it.
So we're not talking about...
So we're not talking about guidelines here. We're talking about rules. That's the idea, right?
Right. So this -- yeah, this functions the same way as our current design standards. And while we're not proposing any changes to the balconies or the driveways moving to a less restrictive, particularly on the balconies, we're codifying a requirement that we've been asking people to do, and that's retain any runoff of those balconies into the building into their storm drain management system. So we're actually -- I'm actually putting that in here. That's one of those that we've been lucky that people have complied with because they see that's a good idea.
It's in the Uniform Building Code. So it's nice to have it in the zoning ordinance, but that's already in the building code. But I'm all for redundancy if that helps put people on notice.
And then the only change to the driveway approach is that this proposes an audible or visual warning for approaching car -- for pedestrians if a car is approaching the exit of a parking garage. But it would be nice, because we've had disagreements between us about the applicability of those site triangles, like how much site distance you have to have in that context of like pulling out of a garage. So it would be nice to, one, identify really how we want to treat that and how it's applicable, and to get guidance on what may be some of the best strategies to meet those requirements. So, one, we nail down exactly what it is so we don't have to question it anymore. And then, two, what's the best way to accomplish it?
Our fare at the driveway is a driver will come out of the driveway and be a really good driver, but somebody will walk in front of him and they couldn't see him. And that conflict, that's our concern with the driveways.
Have there been instances recently where that has led to an accident? In other words, is the fear based in kind of recent examples of a driveway like the one that you're kind of describing and a kind of auto pedestrian kind of accident? Or does that make sense? I mean, have there been recent accidents?
I'm not aware of any that have resulted in like an ambulance showing up and hauling somebody off. But that doesn't mean there hasn't been any. I just, in practice, we like to be able to have vehicles, be able to see out before they --
I understand the concern. I'm just wondering if, in my experience with those situations, is that the kind of tenuous nature of that experience itself, of the design, makes both pedestrian and automobile extra cautious? So, for example, I experienced it most recently, riding my bike or walking on the sidewalk by that Wells Fargo. Is it Wells Fargo? Maybe it's Zions Bank, where there's that kind of cars are coming out of the drive-thru telling machine, and it is a bit hard. But I slow down a lot, and I know that cars are really cautious coming out, and perhaps more cautious than they otherwise would be, and same for pedestrians. So I don't know that I -- I guess what I'm saying is I'm not sure that I buy into the -- I don't know that I share the same kind of fear that you are sharing.
So on those more recent buildings that you're talking about, we've worked with them to try to open those up so that people could see better.
Yeah. So, yeah, I just wonder if design does the work for us in that it makes people extra cautious, the same way that really narrow streets do the work for us, making automobiles really cautious.
Just the inherent environment of a building like that in close proximity to a sidewalk, yeah, it makes people more cautious. But you could imagine if you have a corner there and your car sticking out 11 feet from where you can see, you'll move forward 11 feet before you could even see that pedestrian coming. And so it's really to avoid those sort of situations.
And I guess I've got a couple of questions and maybe a thought along those lines. You know, not everybody on a sidewalk is as cognizant and aware of what's going on or is able to navigate. You know, I'm thinking of little kids on bikes and different things like that. And just the idea of having people design projects with some sense in mind of that relationship between a sidewalk and a driveway and some visibility. If a designer can't take some steps to make that more safe than a hard side obscuring wall on a sidewalk, then, you know, I think we've got some other things probably that we need to look at. I mean, I agree that a lot of times when we talk about concerns like this, I think they do maybe result in more fears than reality. There have been a number of accidents along the West Edge Front in recent years where little kids have been hit on sidewalks with people exiting driveways, but I think that's inherently different because typically that's people backing into the right-of-way from a single-family home.
Yeah.
But visibility, you know, that's what people say is they couldn't, or they looked, you know, and the kid was not there, and maybe because there was a fence or a bush or something, they couldn't see the kid coming and that sort of a thing. So I think the concern is worth certainly, you know, trying to address as best we can. I don't think it necessarily needs to be a deal breaker on every project. For me, just relative to that relationship, and I think this does maybe tie into the driveway-sidewalk relationship. When a building's edge, whether it's a building or a porch or steps or whatever, is right up against the sidewalk, then the public can't use the whole sidewalk. You just can't. I mean, inherently, you're pushed away from that. And I'd love to see some things. For me, the example of what I think we don't want to recreate is the building that's Second North and First East. I know it is Quest. I don't think it's Quest any longer. The thing looks like a fortress.
Telephone exchange.
Yeah. And, you know, to where there's absolutely nothing live adjacent to that building wall to make it a little bit -- really, for me, that's a fundamental of being pedestrian-friendly, is having that be comfortable to be next to and that sort of a thing. And I'm having a hard time getting my head around the balconies overhanging into the right-of-way, I think. I maybe just need to get over my thought there. But for me, that right-of-way line extending up into outer space, I'm totally hung up on that being a sacred thing, that thou shalt not cross. But anyway, I think for whatever it's worth, those are my only thoughts.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I would just add, I think it's City Creek where they have some similar parking exits and you, you know, you meet with pedestrians there.
I'm kind of picturing a couple of places they have.
And I feel like there's been some close calls there in my own experiences at City Creek where you just can't see who's coming and maybe they can't see you because they're looking at their phone. And then I would agree with you. I wonder about balconies and the liability for the city.
It's been done here, right? So, I mean, again, sorry to interrupt Shannon, but I just, I wonder.
Well, and I just wonder, like, if someone leaves their pet out on their balcony and then there is some extra matter leaking down into the public right-of-ways at a space I get to enjoy. Yeah. I don't know. After it goes on my head.
I would like to weigh in just briefly on the driveway issue. I agree with Dave that a lot of times that is a design issue. It really is. And whether that's something we can dive more deeply into or if that's more of a building code issue. You obviously don't want the exit gate right on the sidewalk. You want that car stopping back and proceeding very slowly to cross the sidewalk. The one thing I would not want to see happen is that driveways are widened because that really does impede pedestrian access. There's nothing worse than having to cross even a 35 or a 40-foot driveway to, in an urban setting, as pedestrian. And, you know, that's even more area for conflict. And I think most cities have stepped away from those wide driveways and have now required them to be narrower and also spaced them far apart from each other. So you can't have driveway, 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 you know, down a street like that to improve pedestrian safety.
In practice, that's what we try to do. Narrow as possible and as far apart as possible.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with balcony overhangs, especially if the code requires internal drainage than if you had a dog accident. I'm presuming this would occur on primarily streets that have a retail base to them. So you have 15 feet clear above the sidewalk as opposed to, you know, just 10.
Right. Every, even in a residential, we require that 10-foot clear. So if the bottom of your balcony was on the bottom of your joist, you'd still have 10-foot clear minimum at a residential ground floor.
Okay. The other thing that may come up as we noodle into this further is how those protruding balconies are treated, what kind of materials. You know, is it painted concrete? Is it clad with something? Because that can oftentimes make a big difference in the aesthetics, positively or negatively. But I'll just comment on the ground floor fenestration requirements. I like what you've done so far, requiring the 75% openings or transparency. And also, part B, the ground floor treatments along other streets. I think those are really nice improvements and a lot clearer than what we were kind of muddling around with earlier.
And for clarification on that, we're tentatively, because it affects the exact same section, we're tentatively looking to just roll the ground floor entrance or pedestrian building entrance amendment into this because it's touching this exact same section. And so we're tentatively planning on just making the text that I bring to you match what Dustin proposed in that amendment so that we can just do it together because it's the very same section in regards to ground floor treatment.
That's great.
Was that what?
Does that include the door? Our discussion over the door, would that be?
Yes, yeah. That amendment to clarify the requirement for ground floor entrances, yes.
Mr. Rowan?
I'll just say, I love balconies, too. I mean, that's why we love cities, is like we people-watch. And that's just one more opportunity for people watching. How much better would, I mean, I can think of a variety of buildings. It would be even better with life, kind of that shared exchange of glances. I really like that about cities and downtowns in particular. You had asked, I think, in the document that was kind of framing this one about perhaps other, you said completeness of special districts. Do more districts need to be identified and have standards developed? I don't know if now is the time to have that conversation, but it, I don't know if I want to venture forth right now or if you have particular districts in mind when you ask us to think about this. But I certainly think about places where the BRT will be, for example, as we think about kind of that North Joaquin neighborhood.
So this, the question of districts is specifically within the zones that this applies to, which is DT1, DT2, West Gateway. So we're basically talking about a T shape along Center -- a T that is laying 90 degrees to the right from the freeway to University, up and down along the Freedom to University corridor. That's kind of where this applies.
Okay.
So when I thought about special districts, these are things that always, no matter how long I've been working on it, pop up as soon as I've committed. And one of those was the Gateway area. Everything west, kind of west of Fifth West, along Center Street, may benefit from some different treatment, like additional allowances for building floor height deviating from the curb, you know, if somebody wanted to do brownstones over there that were four or five feet up instead of three feet up, or different fenestration requirements in that area. Because it is a progression from a somewhat more, a progression of density and intensity, both in building mass and intensity of use as you move east along that Center Street corridor as you approach 500 West. And also perhaps the area we looked in our downtown plan, we called it the kind of the north downtown area, the Freedom to mid-block, west of Freedom to mid-block, east of University, north of Center. That area may have maybe a slightly different context with a more, with a different feel, especially along 100 East that could become a primarily pedestrian corridor with a slightly different street treatment or feel in that area. It's kind of analogous to the, what we refer to in here as the Startup District, to that area south of 300. So those are some of the questions I had. And the question of larger specific design districts throughout the city is germane, but yeah, another discussion.
Yeah. So you're saying, right now, in other words, this downtown development's design standards doesn't acknowledge the differences that might exist in some of those places or districts that you?
Like Center Street is really a unique thing. And saying 200 North should be treated the same way as Center Street probably isn't accurate. That's why we wrote in a Center Street section, kind of categorizing and delineating some of the unique characteristics of that corridor.
So what's the, maybe I'm missing something here. So what's the advantage of labeling this downtown development design standards versus?
Gateway?
Yeah, Center Street and Startup District Development Design Standards.
Because as this currently is written, it applies to the downtown 1 and 2 zones, the ITOD zone, the Gateway and the West Gateway zone. So that would be a more fundamental question. Do we write completely discreet design standards for each of those areas? Or like Portland does, they have what is called a downtown design standard, which outlines like the top level, the A level. And then the north park blocks district has a specific design criteria within the broad envelope of building frontages. There'll be something specific for, or the south auditorium. So they have design standards for, discreet design standards for smaller areas with an overarching structure of general design standards for the city. So that is a way we could take it. It requires a lot more, kind of going back to the drawing board.
It'll also increase your management and requirements. I mean, you got to strike that sweet balance between doing that and not doing that because the more policies you got, the more overhead you're going to have to enforce this. Well, this is across the street and...
I mean, right now, everyone has to follow the design standards and what, and I don't know that having one set for one area and one set for another necessarily, it makes it harder on the front end, but administering it down the road, you still got to go through one set, whether it's Set A or Set B.
Too broad or too narrow, then you're going to have some issues.
Right. Some of the other topics that, as you've looked at it, you know, architectural standards are always tricky. A lot, most, a lot of the good standards that we've looked at don't try to dictate, they stay far away from style. They're very agnostic when it comes to style and permit a pretty wide variety of outcomes. They're just seeking to get good quality in those range of outcomes. There are areas in the country, like one Gary likes to cite in Washington, that has a German Bavarian theme, and that is it. You want to build in this city, you're going to look like a Bavarian village. And I don't think Provo has ever been a thing stylistically, so we didn't want to go to that point. So that's one of the things we're looking for feedback on. And then specifically, the third one, if we're doing enough to address site design standards and parking garages specifically to make sure, one, the standards that apply to them are clear, which right now it's kind of ambiguous whether the design standards, do they apply to a parking garage? Is it a building? Is it like everything else? And that's addressed in here. But also additional items that we haven't considered, like do we care about being able to see cars in parking garages above retailers' floors? Do we care, like Salt Lake City does, that any parking garage deck that is adjacent to a street is level? They don't allow slope ramp decks to be on the street side of the parking garage. And where we have potentially two 700-plus stall parking garages in the concept pipeline, it's a good time to think about what's the optimum outcome in regards to that type of structure.
Some cities regulate, similar to Salt Lake, that the ramps have to be internalized. They cannot face the street, so you don't have that obvious. They have to architecturally treat the deck as though it's a building and not just a parking, a concrete slab parking deck, precast or whatever. And they also, a lot of them, depending on the location in the city, require active use. require active use at the ground floor.
Right.
So they would require usually a retail or a community service kind of function. And those can be admittedly difficult to lease.
Right.
And oftentimes, you know, they do sit vacant for a while. But they're, what they're trying to do is, you know, prevent walking down this dead street if you're a pedestrian with nothing to look at but all these parked cars. They can also require shielding of the lights. So if they have fluorescent lights inside the parking deck, you know, those are not visible from the street. There are a million and one ways to regulate parking ducts, but I think in the downtown area, it's important.
So right now, we do require that habitable first floor depth. We don't allow any parking to come up to the street. This has a, I don't, now I don't remember. I think you might have mentioned it, Deborah, about the width of park, of exits and driveways. We have a caveat in here now that says, except for minimum ground floor level frontage required for access to parking, no parking or loading should be visible from the ground floor. So even if, with that active front, active first floor, we're trying to not permit like two in-lanes, two out-lanes, a speed ramp lane. Those, try to mitigate that. And there may, so some of those additional points are worth considering, I think, about the architectural treatment, which we say in here that it's treat, has to be architecturally treated, compatible with the adjacent buildings and with the rest of the ground floor of its building. But whether or not we apply this 50% or 70%, you know, maximum glass or open, if you're in a parking garage, if it's not ventilated, would the glass be the same as open space? Those kind of things.
Beyond the first floor? Do you guys know of projects or cities that might require wrapping of a deck use-wise?
We actually, yeah, we do not, on primary streets, which is Center, University, and 100 West, we do not permit parking to be above the required ground floor space. So we have a 30-foot habitable first floor depth. On 100 West, Center Street, and University, we do not allow parking to occur over that space. But on the other streets, we do allow parking to come out over the top of that habitable first floor. And it's a question of whether that should be permitted anywhere or if that current regulation just to primary streets is suitable, or if we need to reclassify some of the streets based on their context and how they're developing.
Under windows and balconies, it says doors and windows that operate as sliders are prohibited on street frontages and facades. So we can't have windows that slide?
So sliders are horizontal?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not permitted.
Okay, because?
It's kind of a, a basic trick that especially has come about in like the new urbanist architectural language, that it's easier to design a good-looking building with vertically proportioned windows than horizontally proportioned windows. And it's really hard to do an attractive slider in a vertically proportioned window, and that you tend to get a better look and a nicer window in a single or a double hung than you do in a slider.
Okay.
So it, it's a slightly inelegant way to avoid some of the most undesirable outcomes.
Would we have a write-in there why we're, why we're stating this?
Anything I come up with would be after the fact, trying to diagnose the thoughts of your counterparts 10 years ago. I don't know that we have a practice of recording the legislative intent behind our ordinances, but I don't disagree that it's good to clarify a rational basis, at least when we're adopting them.
Okay.
And that, looking back on it and knowing and have read literature now, that's generally why there's regulations about sliders and window proportion. But that may not be at all the reason why that was adopted.
Okay. And then it says 100 feet from railways, right-ofways in order to what, mitigate vibration within a structure?
Sound, yeah. You have to reach a certain sound attenuation rating in your building envelope.
Is 100 feet enough?
That's an Ed question.
That's right.
According to Ed, if you can see it, you can hear it.
Mr. Jones.
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like enough.
Because I live at 120 West, and the train is at 400 West, and my aluminum windows don't do anything, so.
Well, I have, I've gone through this, and I've redlined three different places. And the section on railways is the third item that I redlined. The phrase, "Provide documentation from an acoustical engineer or from the materials manufacturer." I would strongly recommend that you strike that phrase or "from the materials manufacturer" for two reasons. One, materials manufacturers lie.
They overstate the qualifications of their materials?
And number two, to get sound attenuation, it requires a system and not just a simple element.
Right.
So the, the building structure is composed of windows, doors, roofs, so forth. And you also have what we call flanking. So just treating the face of the building will not provide the attenuation that you need if the sound can wrap around and come through a flimsy side wall. So I would suggest that if the building is within 100 feet of a railroad right-of-way, then, then I would have it reviewed and stamped by an acoustical engineer. And the reason I, David can understand what I mean by stamped, and maybe there's a better way to express that. I just added, "Shall provide a stamped, shall provide stamped documentation." If that's not understood, then that needs to be clarified.
Well, we use that same, that same verbiage in other places.
Okay, the implication is it needs to be stamped by a P.
By a license.
Yeah. It needs to be stamped by a PE and not the sound guy for a rock and roll band. Okay.
Is there a certain, or would you recommend a certain, like, sound attenuation?
Yes.
Rating to be achieved?
That was, that was the other thing.
Probably had a goal we should get to, to have them certify that they're achieving.
That's the other thing I was going to recommend that you add, is you state what you're really looking for. And we'd have to take a measurement of the noise produced by a passing train and then determine what's acceptable in the living space, and then you specify. So you'd either specify an STC rating, Sound Transmission Class, which is a measurement of the isolation that's provided by a partition that's verified by an established lab. Or you just say you want so many dB attenuation. But you'd first have to know what the sound, noise, sound level is that's, that's produced by the train.
Luckily, all of our crossings are in quiet zones, so we don't usually face the horns. But it's, so it's the harder to deal with low-frequency noises.
There's probably some standard in the literature. I don't know what it is.
Okay.
But I would suggest that that be researched and, and you attach a number to it.
Ed, we used to wear double hearing protection in the Navy. We could just issue earplugs and headphones to anyone using the building.
This may sound picky, but, but down the road, it's going to make a difference.
Yeah, the more specific we can be, the better.
I mean, it costs a whole lot more to build a building that has a, say, a 50 dB attenuation versus a 25 dB attenuation. So when I write a specification or a contract, I write it, and I know what my intent is, but I always go back and reread it. And I read it with the, with the intent of saying, where's the loophole? Where, what can be misinterpreted? I know what I want to say if it's interpreted by a reasonable person. But if, if it means several thousand dollars to a contractor to misinterpret something, then he'll do it. So that's, that's the spirit in which I've, I've read this. How can this be misinterpreted by an unscrupulous whatever?
What were your other two?
Okay, the other one is in Section 1C, Roman numeral six. A minimum of one pedestrian entrance?
Oh, yeah, so this, you will see a whole, that will have a whole subsection under it. This is the existing language. What we're going to do is move in the proposed language in the ordinance amendment that you've seen once from Dustin.
If I wanted to get away from, with something, I would misinterpret this.
Yeah, this is not good.
Because this says that if my structure is less than 50 feet or 100 feet in the other, so I don't, I'm not required to put an entrance.
Right. And then in the amendment, we clearly state, no less than one entrance shall be required, so.
And you did that, or whoever wrote this, you did, it does say that. It says, "All properties with frontage on Center Street must provide a pedestrian entrance." That front Center Street. So there you state a minimum.
Right, so this isn't, this isn't the language.
Okay.
So we'll let you take a critical eye to see how you can circumvent our better attempt.
So I can see how I would misinterpret it.
Well, that's what we need. Because like you said, that's why our occupancy language in our code is so long. It's because it's had year, decades of people picking at it, trying to figure out how they can get around it.
Right. Then the, the third is more a question of what your intent is. On 2, massing in street wall, A, street wall, and then Roman numeral 3, you talk about permitted vehicular access driveways and hotel drop-offs. Do you intend to restrict that to hotel? Or could this also be appropriately applied to a different kind of a building? Like, say, a a professional office with doctors? And so you want to provide a way, well, like the hospitals do. You want to provide a way so a person can, can bring grandma right to the front entrance and let her out so she doesn't have to walk?
Right.
And, and I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just asking a question. Do you really want to restrict that to hotel? Or should that apply to other kinds of buildings?
That's a good question, yeah. I think generally, we want to be as restrictive with that as is practical, because it does create a, kind of an interference situation or it diminishes the quality of the street front for pedestrians. And in a lot of cases, like with a professional office, that access can be accommodated either in the parking garage by having a pull-in lane to a direct entrance. But it seems that hotels are often the most demanding that in their program, in their design, they have to have that. And they're less comfortable with locating it in another portion on the building. But I, that's a valid area to explore.
Plus Josh is anti-grandma.
Yeah, my grandmas are all dead, so.
The reason I thought of it is, is just today, my wife and I went to, to see a doctor and, and she's having trouble walking right now. And so I drove up and dropped her off and then went and parked.
That's a good observation.
Having said all that, I would love to see the Marriott's drop-off on Center Street go away.
So would we.
It's horrible.
Yeah, it's not utilized, it's a dead spot. It has visibility and sightline issues.
It's horrible, yeah.
Yeah, and people sometimes park in there for ever.
Sorry, I just had to add that.
They left a pod in there for like three months, so.
How about this, I mean, maybe along those lines? The, the queuing space and drop-off area that's going to be needed if AV vehicles really, if autonomous vehicles really, I mean, that.
We're not going to need on-street parking, we're going to need on-street drop-offs.
That's what it's going to be, you know, miles and miles of it maybe. But anyway, maybe that's one reason also. Just any right-of-way that we can get now with any project ever, I think in all likelihood, it's going to be like gold down the road, because that space is, is going to be more and more happening, I think, in public rights of way, even when parking goes away and stuff like that. That's for somebody a generation beyond me to really worry about, probably. But I think on things like that with the Marriott and how it's situated, that might be worth thinking about, though, you know, just that future prospect. So the only questions or I guess comments I really had, just kind of next step. And are there projects that are in the pipeline that would be good to be able to use these, or projects maybe that aren't in the pipeline but that are envisioned to where we'd want to get something adopted before they?
Right. So technically, with this agenda, as we've talked about it, actually beyond a public hearing, agenda starts the pending clock.
Pending legislation.
The pending legislation period. So we have six months to move to adoption. I anticipate it not taking that long because we're basically, have a draft at a point where we're almost ready to ask for your recommendation. So moving forward, yes, there are projects, particularly the area from 100 North to 300 North on Freedom to 100 West is the next big thing.
Something's happening there.
Right, something's happening there, and we'd like to be able to be ahead of that. So from a process standpoint, I'm planning on taking the feedback that you've brought to us tonight, incorporating that with a couple of other things we've been thinking about internally, and then bringing back next month, a draft for your consideration and recommendation to the council.
So the next step after tonight, you'll be discussing this with council as well? Is that?
We don't have plans to discuss this to council prior to your recommendation, no.
Okay. Any other discussion? Comments, questions? So we're not voting on this this evening?
That was a good discussion.
Yeah, it was a good discussion. Thank you for bringing this to us. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, I know that Shannon's got to write two papers before midnight.
And watch the Jazz game.
Sounds like some multitasking is going to be happening.
That's exactly right. I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second?
Second.
So be it. Oh, ew.
No pot-bellied pigs, didn't we have an ordinance about?
Jamin, Jamin likes to people-watch in more exciting neighborhoods than mine.
It's good to be young.
I like watching people, no matter who they are.
Oh, man, it's the best when there's a balcony and they're watching you and you're watching them.
Yeah.
When I lived in Seattle, it was certainly interesting.
You never know what you might see.
You never know. When or where, or what form.
By the way, I didn't know probably had a street in Mother's Lane.
I know, that was a new discussion.
I ran on that before, but I had no idea.